Good evening. Welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidates Forum for the April 7th Fort Collins City Election. On April 7th, we'll be voting for Mayor, for Council Members for Districts 2, 4, and 6. We'll also be voting for six ballot initiatives. I'm Marna Schellman. I'm a member of the League, and I'll moderate the council portion of the forum that will begin shortly. Since 1920, the League of Women Voters has provided nonpartisan political information free of charge to the public. We are especially focused on voter registration and voter education programs like this forum this evening. To cast a vote in the April 7th election, you must reside in the city of Fort Collins Limits for at least 22 days prior to the election and be registered to vote. It's very important to note that in this election, the city is allowing same-day voter The election will be conducted by mail. Ballots will be mailed out to voters on March 20th. Supplemental mailings will begin the week of March 23rd. The city prefers to receive the ballots by mail and therefore does not require any postage on your ballots. If you're going to register to vote near day or same day, it can get tight getting the city to get you your ballot. In that case, please go to the website that will be shown in a minute. It will be FortCollins.gov/CityClerkApril7Elections. At the bottom of that page will be miscellaneous election information that will help you make sure you're registered and get to vote. In Fort Collins, city council members are elected for terms of four years, and they're allowed to have two terms. Each council member is elected only by her or his district voters. The mayor is elected for a two-year term and can have up to three terms. Mayors are elected by all the voters in the city. Now let's proceed with the forum for the city council. We have all the candidates for Districts 2, 4, and 6. Thank you very much. This forum will go till 8:15. We'll take a five-minute break, and after that, there will be the mayoral forum. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to introduce themselves, their background, their qualifications. After that, each candidate will have one minute to respond to questions, mostly posed from the audience and screened to avoid duplication. Question answering will begin on the audience's left with Ray Martinez, and proceed one candidate to the audience's right with every question. At the end of questions, we'll have one minute for each candidate to give concluding remarks, and this time, we'll start on the audience's right with Carl Wonsvik answering first. So let's go ahead with our questions. Ray, will you please introduce yourself, explain why you're running, your background, and your qualifications?
There you go. Thank you. My name's Ray Martinez, and I'm the former mayor of Fort Collins, but more importantly, I was raised in this community since I was five years old. Brought to Fort Collins from the state orphanage as a child, and I've enjoyed my stay here. I was raised at 604 Sycamore Street at that point, and became an active part of this community. In fact, one of my first jobs was downtown shining shoes, and I used to shine the mayor's shoes, and he gave me a lot of good coaching. Being retired from the police department after 25 years in law enforcement collectively and serving in the military really has served to me a good point of background in understanding this community and know how it works inside and outside of government. And after that, then I started working in the private sector, but then I got elected three terms as the mayor of Fort Collins. And when I left that office after term limitations, and I worked again into the private sector with an IT company and did a radio spots, and I've done radio shows in a couple of radio stations in Greeley and in Fort Collins. So I really think what this election to me is about. It's about growth as a community, not growth of the community, and I believe in collaboration. I believe in partnerships, and I believe that we have to have the power of influence to work with people and to bring people together. This isn't about us and them. This really is about the community, and I really believe Fort Collins wants a sense of community, and that's what it's really all about.
Thank you, Ray. Nancy?
My name's Nancy Tellez. I arrived in Fort Collins in 1972 to begin my 31-year teaching career in Pooter Schools. I had the opportunity through that experience to meet and get to know students and their families and to realize the quality and variety of the people that live in Fort Collins. After I retired, I was elected to the Pooter School District School Board, and I have served on that board for actually nine years. You might wonder how I can serve for nine years on a job that is supposed to end in eight years, but I took the place of someone who left before his term was over, so I had a little extra opportunity there. On the school board, I had the opportunity to face a circumstance that I think is similar to what is faced on city council. We were in a position oftentimes to have to balance resources and the needs of students, and those sometimes worked against each other, and then to hear from the community and the parents and so on about their ideas.
Eric?
Good evening. I was enjoying a Big Al's Classic
Could you turn on your mic, please?
Thank you. Good evening. I was enjoying a Big Al's Classic Combo Hamburger, and I was out on Mountain Avenue. It was July, so I was sitting at the picnic bench, my back to the road, and to my right were two young men leaning up against the bike rack. They had on their white t-shirts with skater logos and shorts down to their shins, and they were new to Fort Collins, and overhearing their conversation, it was clear, they were impressed. And I heard one say to the other describing our city, "A bubble of awesomeness." We do have a good thing here, don't we? And I believe it's because we have attempted to express our vision and values in a balanced manner, in which we have quality neighborhoods and a robust economy and a healthy environment. And I'm running to help us to continue to maintain that balance. My name is Eric Cronwall. I'm a candidate in District 4, and I'm really excited to be here tonight, and I have to admit, a little nervous as well, and I welcome the conversation this evening. Thank you, Marna, and thank you, League, and especially a big thank you to voters here tonight and watching at home.
Thank you. Kristen?
Hi, I'm Kristen Stevens. I'm running for city council in District 4. My story's pretty typical. I came to Fort Collins to go to CSU and then decided to stay and raise my family here. I worked my way through CSU, working at the Stone Lion Bookstore, so anybody who's been here for a while knows that was a pretty iconic place in Fort Collins in downtown. I decided to stay in Fort Collins because I frankly fell in love with the city. It's pretty easy to do. As far as my experience, I have a lot of civic experience. I've held leaderships in the city at CSU and on Pooter School District Advisory Board. For the past five years, I've served on the city's CDBG Board, which advises city council on how to spend its affordable housing dollars. I'm also helping right now to draft the city's Affordable Housing Strategic Plan. Also served as co-chair of the Women's Commission and served on the Pooter School District's District Advisory Board and have volunteered with a number of local nonprofits. I'm running for Fort Collins City Council because I want to give back to the city that I love. Fort Collins is the best place to raise a family, work, study, start a business, and we need to keep it that way. I want to make sure we protect our neighborhoods, our natural areas, and our natural resources, and I want to bring common sense solutions to Fort Collins. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry?
Good evening. I'm Jerry Horak, and I have to thank the League and the folks coming up.
Could you turn on your mic, please?
You'd think I'd remember that, wouldn't you? Hi, I'm Jerry Horak. I'm running for District 6. I'm currently on the Fort Collins City Council. I just want to thank the League and the folks in the audience and folks watching at home and who will be watching the tape thing later. What, you know, I've had the privilege and honor of serving the last four years, and also, I like to tell people I served when I was a little boy too, for 13 years between '81-'94. And what I've learned over that time, it's actually not that important sometimes what you do up here with your vote. What's really important is how you really engage the public. And what I've tried to really do this last four years is to really do a lot of engagement. We've received thousands and thousands of emails over four years, and I've tried to respond to each and every one of those. I can't say I've made it. There's a few citizens I have given up responding to because of just how they keep coming back to you with saying things. But I've held listening sessions twice a month for nearly the last two years. I've really tried to work on solutions and meeting and engaging the public in all sorts of ways, because that's actually how you come up with meaningful solutions and meaningful ideas, because it's just not what you know. It's the material you read, but it's also listening to the citizens and really getting out in the community and making sure that you've listened to all the different voices, not those that you're used to. So I look forward to the questions coming up, and thanks for coming.
Thanks. Carl?
Thank you. Thanks to our fantastic League of Women Voters. They have arranged a full moon for us tonight, so Marna, this audience might need a little watching. So far, so good. I'm Carl Wonsvik. Prior to arriving into Fort Collins in 1977, I'd been a military child my whole life and an Air Force officer. I had a young family. I decided they needed a home base that I myself didn't have. I'm very happy to say that two of my three kids are still here in town and two little granddaughters. I hope you've seen them on my flyers, cute as they can be. I, like Nancy, taught 31 years. I think we were right on the money, actually, coming in and leaving at the same time. Nancy, it's wonderful to be here with her from that time to this time. At any rate, my leadership in the Air Force and the school system are my qualifications. I hope to represent my neighbors, and I hope to represent you and your neighbors as a city council member here in Fort Collins, Colorado, and I promise that, given that chance, I will do my very best, and I will keep in touch with you every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy, I'm going to start with you with this question. In order of importance, what are the three top priorities you want to address if elected? Please give us one, two, three.
I think, number one, what I want to address is not so important as what people in the community want us to address as issues and solutions. So I think my first priority is to find out what do the people in the community want the city council to be working on and what problems do they want us to be solving. However, I think there are some problems that are likely to come up, and one of them has, and it's not just one problem, actually, it's a rather complex collection of issues, and that has to do with the growth that is taking place in Fort Collins. That growth is going to require some changes. We are not in a place where we can just let more and more people come in and create more and more traffic and
I'm going to need to stop you, Nancy.
Oh, I've got to start watching this guy.
Eric? Eric, please. Priorities.
I've found in my personal life that I am more effective when I focus on only a few goals, and when I got down to a handful, I really started to get a lot of things done. I know that you only asked for three, but I've got room for five. So here are my thoughts in no particular order. Stay true to city plan. I think it expresses the balanced approach that has made Fort Collins what it is today. Secondly, traffic and trains. Thirdly, energy use. That's how I prefer to talk about the Climate Action Plan. Fourthly, developing an economic plan that is as aspirational as the Climate Action Plan. We have got to to maintain balance and to be able to pay for our Climate Action Plan. And finally, to hold CSU's feet to the fire on the on-campus stadium. I do believe there'll be an IGA in place before the election, and I think we need to hold their feet to the fire. I'd appreciate your feedback on my handful of items. Thank you.
Kristen?
Sure. I'm going to agree with Nancy that I think we need to address growth issues in the community. I want to make sure that we protect our way of life as we grow and make sure we protect our natural resources and our natural areas, but I also want to make sure that we make space for more affordable housing in our community, which is severely lacking, and it'll be a challenge to balance both those things, but I think we can do it. We can do, we've done a lot in Fort Collins, so we can do that. I do think we need to lead with a climate change action plan. I think that that's a way for our city to lead and show other regional cities that we can do it, and I'm glad that city council is supporting it, but I definitely want to help lead that charge. And then I think Eric's right on the money with talking about traffic. I'm, as a mom, I'm interested in safety issues too around bikes and pedestrians and making sure that we have infrastructure to protect our pedestrians and bicyclists, but we also need to work on infrastructure involving the train because there's some issues. Thank you.
Jerry?
Yes, ma'am. I would say one of the ones again is the changing society we're in for social media. One of the concerns I have is folks under 40 aren't as engaged as they used to be 20 or 30 years ago. The city council is made up of folks under 40, mostly in the 80s and early 90s. That's a big change, so that's a struggle for how to get that right input. The other one, I agree with some of my fellow folks up here, the Climate Action Plan is of paramount importance because that is a big thing we have to look at, not just for us, for our grandchildren, and way into the future to make a real difference. The other one is really, I came up with a term, it used to be safe routes to school. It's really called safe routes to everywhere. It's being able to walk, bike, or use transit to anywhere you have to go in this community, and that's another big lift, but also ties into Climate Action Plan and also ties into how we can really start to change how the city is and how that growth is occurring in a much more meaningful way using that transit system, and that's, we have a lot of money that we're putting into the Bob too, to do that, the capital tax you get the vote on.
Carl?
Three issues. First one would be, my neighbors would have me represent them, saying they're not getting their voice heard. I hear that in the coffee shops. I hear that in the neighborhood meetings I attend related to planning and development. I hear that fairly often. I'm not exactly sure, I'm not exactly sure how each individual voice can be presented, but I do think we need to work very hard with our plans in the city to make sure that lots of folks get involved in everything. The second thing is the environmental problem. Kristen mentioned some of these issues. We have a couple of major problems. One is, according to the report from CSU Geological Department, it looked at the river. The river is barely surviving ecologically. Second, we're looking at air pollution here that's going to be unprecedented fairly soon. We have a tremendous amount of air pollution coming to us from the east, just brought in, sits around the mountains, and we also have traffic. And finally, of course, good development
Carl, I need to stop you.
Would be great, as opposed to, let's say, the Summit or the Stadium.
I do need to stop you. Thank you. So Eric will begin with you for this question. What types of incentives should I apologize. I apologize. Thank you.
That's all right. Okay. I really believe what's important is to bring representation back to the people. Coupled with that, here's the three-pronged approach when I was mayor that I used to use to make my decisions. I really believe there has to be balance between our economy, our environment, and our quality of life. And everyone here's addressed every one of those categories that we're talking about. Yes, I think the cap program has to be monitored closely. There's some high risk, you know, and costs involved with that, but I think it's a reality at some point, and if we carefully walk through those stages. And when we talk about the economy, a sustainable economy, which means also, I think, sustainable income for people, how's that working? You know, and our quality of life, safety in our community is in paramount. It's very important. So when we talk about sustainability and the quality of life that we're mentioning, that everyone's talking about here, I think you have to talk in the same breath about sensibility. People want sensibility in how we approach things, and I think that's a very important thing, that we have public engagement.
Thanks, and I do apologize.
That's all right.
Eric? What types of incentives should the city offer to existing businesses to relocate or expand?
According to CSU economist Martin Shields, we have full employment, and so it's going to be very difficult for us to add new jobs, but I do think councils should be on the lookout for opportunities in which we can bring to our city higher-than-average wages, when we can bring primary jobs, and we can support and enhance locally-owned businesses. In terms of incentives, I'm really suspicious about direct payments to employers, and I think that in the case where someone wants to locate or expand, I think removing barriers is something that we can consider doing. I also would say that in my own business, I have worked hard to foster win-win in the transactions that I'm involved with. I think in a case where a business offers something to Fort Collins, I say, let's find a win for both of us. Otherwise, I would say, no deal.
Kristen?
So with existing businesses to expand, I'm not sure, we have a lot in our economic toolbox, so I think we can use some of the ways to incentivize business. We can make sure we keep collaborations between different businesses and between the university and Front Range Community College. I think that, but I would be hesitant to use tax breaks or TIF to kind of, I think we've, we may have overused some of that, and so I don't think we should necessarily go into that part of the toolbox. I do think fostering relationships is probably the best way to help businesses expand in our community, and many businesses want to expand because they like our quality of life. So I think as long as we maintain that, we'll be able to attract businesses and keep businesses in our community.
Jerry?
I think the councils use the tax increment financing as well as the rebates on use tax very effectively, from Valley Seal, which is a relatively small company, up on North College, to Woodward. And companies like Woodward would not be located here unless we did have some sort of package that made sense, because they had other places to go to that were better for them. So to me, the city's Economic Health Plan outlines all sorts of different tools that we can use, but we have to make decisions when you look at an individual setting versus making sweeping statements about what we're going to do or not do, because each situation is different, and you have to make sure you're making the best decision. Another example, Foothall's Mall. Without the tax increment financing, that doesn't happen. It would still be a deteriorating area. It's another example where I think it was very well-used and made sense. So the thing is, what you learn on councils, to make sure you take a look at each issue and don't make just ideological statements.
Carl?
I just agree a little bit on the TIF issue. TIF is a good way to finance things, but you have to decide, is it a good thing to finance? TIF financed the Summit. That wasn't a very good thing to finance. It's going to finance some of the Old Town Square. That's a pretty good thing to finance. So we have to look really carefully at what we're going to finance with a TIF or whatever. And I agree with Kristen on tax breaks. Typically, we don't need to get tax breaks, because guess what? We have a town here that's been on almost 100 best lists over the last couple of years, over the last recent years. When I started writing Christmas cards in 1977, no one ever heard of Fort Collins, Colorado. And it took a long time before they did, but now they all know Fort Collins, Colorado, and not just because I write them a Christmas card. They read the news. They see it on television. We have the greatest incentive right here, the town that we live in, and if we maintain the quality of life we have here, the open space, the trails, parks, the infrastructure, community events, we're not going to have to beg people to come.
Thanks, Carl. Ray?
Yes, thank you. When you talk about expansion, I don't want to limit us just in that term of just expanding, but how do we create good business in Fort Collins? How do we build a strong economy? And I think that's what we have to look at. Do we have a strong economy? What do the people think that we have as an economy? What is it that they would like? I think trying to figure out the DNA of what this community is and what they want to be is really important first. So public engagement is a key thing. In the same breath, I think we have to talk about partnerships. Partnerships with the CSU Business College, partnerships with the North Fort Collins Business Association, the South Fort Collins Business Association, the DDA, with the council and with staff. These are important people to talk about partnerships, so it's key that we're engaged with these people to find out what is it that we really need. And of course, we do want clean industry here, and we do want high-paying jobs. We want people to be able to afford to live here. Affordability is really key.
Thanks, Nancy.
I think the best support that the city can provide for local businesses is to provide world-class infrastructure and services, transportation, safe neighborhoods, recreational opportunities, and arts and cultural experiences, as we do. These are the things that keep people here who are already here and cause people to want to be here. We also have a strategic health, economic health plan that has initiated small-business incubators and business clusters to help grow startups and local businesses. So I think those are the kinds of strategies that we need to continue to use to support business and also to support the community.
Thanks. Kristen? Given Fort Collins' current transportation challenges, what ideas would you promote?
Well, I think everybody likes taking the MAX, and that's, that's really has made public transportation really fun and popular, and I think we can definitely build on that popularity now. I think people want to see routes that are going towards the MAX and be able to access the MAX more easily by bike routes, and so I think it's really, it's nice to have something that makes public transportation popular. I also think we need to work on bike and pedestrian infrastructure, because I think we've had a lot of accidents lately. I know we've had a lot of accidents lately, and it feels dangerous for some people to walk and bike to their destinations, and we need to fix that. We need to get people onto low-stress routes. I'd like to see more people using public transportation and multi modes, multiple modes of transportation, but we need to make sure that people can do that safely, and that, so that's what I'd like to see.
Jerry?
Yeah, as I said earlier, I think the safe routes to everywhere, where we have connections, whether you're walking, whether you're biking, whether you're using transit. And for the transit part, it has to be also very frequent. So one of the things we've done on councils, increase their frequency, the times the service is in place, getting it later at night, and we have to do more of that. But to do that, we have to make, it's a real community decision. We spend about $13 million right now on transport and MAX. To do the level of service that I'm talking about here would be $20 million, so it's a significant decision. The other one is, I think, dealing with the railroad and the overpasses. One of the things that was interesting in one of my listening sessions, a citizen mentioned tolling, and when you first hear it, what do you, why? How's that going to work? Well, if you think about it, with the technology of today, you can do that. 10 years ago, you couldn't do that. You can put little chips on cars, and you could actually probably raise half the money needed or a third of the money, a significant part, by doing that for the overpass and having, and that's a community engagement issue, to really engage the community over next year or two.
Carl?
I think we're all pretty much in agreement on the issue of mass transit and of multimodal transportation and how we need to be supporting those. In my district, however, we're kind of locked on the west side of the train, and being locked on the west side of the train is pretty frustrating, from my wife trying to get to work, to school in the morning, and those train delays have gone from 20 minutes during the day to about an hour and 20 minutes during the day. Our issue on the west side is, we're worried about some kind of emergency situation. We probably need to do something about that. We need to get some kind of overpass, underpass for emergency vehicles to get from one side to the other, whether there's an hour train there or not. That's a serious issue. That's something which will cost money. It's not cheap to make an overpass, probably $18 million, something like that, but it's the kind of money that we're probably going to need to spend if we want the west side not to face the risks that the people with the hospitals over there have.
Thanks. Ray?
Yes, thank you. When we talk about transportation, I think you have to talk about it regionally as well. How does it feed into Fort Collins? Fort Collins has I-25 that has three main entrances that comes there. That's an important piece. How do we keep that flowing correctly? Berthold Hills is already being addressed by the state. CDOT's helping us with the transportation from the downtown bus terminal that'll go to downtown Denver three times a day, starting this spring sometime. That's excellent. That's a great quality. The bus grid system, once it's built out, and depending how much money we have to do it, I think you're going to see a significant difference in how that's going to work. The bicycle Safe Street, master plan for the bicycle safety, Safe Street is coming out. It should be, I think it's approved now, and how do we create commuting for people who want to ride their bikes to work and make it in a safe way instead of just a tardy long way around? Adequate public facilities is always a key thing that we have to pay attention to. And when we have a master street plan, it's falling through with that plan, making sure it happens.
Nancy?
Well, it sounds like we're all very much in agreement on this. When you have car, roads that are filled with cars and you're waiting in long lines at every stoplight, walking sometimes seems like the best mode of transportation. And walking is, in some situations, a good mode of transportation, provided that we have safe sidewalks so that people are secure there. Biking is also a very popular form of transportation here, and we now have a bike plan that's going to take us forward in providing safe places for people to ride their bikes. And then the MAX and transport expansion is the other part of this. That's something that I would hope the city would give a little time to develop. For the first time since I've lived here, I now have a bus that comes down near to where I live, and I can walk a couple blocks and get on the bus, and I'd like to see that continue.
Thanks, Nancy. Eric?
I'm spending every spare moment I can out in my district, and the transportation challenges that I've heard from the voters a lot, I've already mentioned, is traffic and trains. Last week, I visited with the Traffic Operations Department, and let me tell you, that place is impressive. They have a giant video display on the wall for real-time traffic monitoring. And equally impressive is the staff. And Traffic Operations staff is really working hard. They understand our frustrations, and they're doing great work. They just have more work to do, frankly. In the last budgeting cycle, there were two budget enhancements proposed by Traffic Operations. One related to adding staff, and the other was studying the switching that takes place along Riverside by LeMay. Council approved both of those enhancements. Good call, council. And my budgeting priority is going to be to continue that.
Thanks. Jerry, regarding the new CSU stadium, polls consistently show the majority of citizens don't want the stadium that's breaking ground this summer. What have you done? You're on city council now, and others, what will you do if elected to help bring the city from disharmony into harmony about this situation?
What I've done is, for the last four years, when I first got on council, and this will happen to other people who get elected, President Frank sends you a congratulations note. So when I got my note, I sent it back to him, saying, I'd like to meet with you. And so the first year I spent meeting on housing issues, and then the last three years I've been spending on the CSU stadium issue. And what I've tried to do is to encourage him to actually meet with the opponents, which he chose not to do, to do more public outreach, which he chose to do, and to really start to think of it, it's more than just what's the impacts from the stadium, it's the impacts in the infrastructure around CSU. That's what the intergovernmental agreement really deals with. It doesn't mitigate all the impacts, never said it would, but it's trying to look at things, and actually, it does more than just deal with the stadium. It deals with overpasses, it deals with turn lanes, things like that are something that's been needed for this community for years going on the campus. It's very dangerous on Shields every day. It's like going through an obstacle course. So what I did is try to engage one of the major players, CSU, in this issue.
Carl?
Marna, can I buy another minute or two?
Sure. I, sure. Ray?
No, 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 no. He was joking.
Pardon?
He was joking.
Jeopardy? Wheel of Fortune? What is it? I can't remember.
Land in Arizona? I just, you know.
Here's what I do. We need a citizen vote. We had a chance a couple years ago, the council did not choose that. We need a resolution to the Board of Governors, saying, we really don't like this project. Why don't we do something about it? And we need to put this through the city development process. I think until it's been through the city development process, particularly with our own environmental impact study, we really don't know what we're looking at. We are going to have to take the word of folks who are marketing the stadium to us on what the harms are. I'm seriously against that possibility. I think we need to do our own study and take a look at it. An environmental impact study requires you, in fact, to compare alternatives, and that really wasn't done. Unfortunately, this is just a huge, big problem. But it doesn't kill the whole body of CSU. If there's one part of your arm or something that's broken, you get it fixed, and you go on. And I think that's what we need to do here. Fix the arm, and then let's go on.
Thanks, Carl. Ray?
Thank you. I think this is more of a question of partnership and relationship with the university. What I don't want to see is divisiveness over one topic issue. I think this is something that we have to really figure out. How are we going to work in partnership with them, hold them accountable for what they say they're going to do, what the expenses are going to come out to be? Because you know estimates are never accurate, it always ends up being higher. So we know that's an inevitable thing. But there are some caveats with what they're trying to do, and that's that pedestrian overpass, it's already been mentioned before, and making them go through the city's development review process, which I think they're willing to do. So to me, it's really about, how can we hold their feet to the fire of what they are going to do? Obviously, they have the right to do it. It's not a question of, can we stop them? It's a question of, how can we gain or maximize what we can get out of this project if they're going to go forward? If they choose not to, then that's probably just as good.
Thanks, Ray. Nancy?
According to a statement that was recently released by the city attorney, there are some additional processes that may be available to us in examining this issue. So I would be interested, first of all, in knowing more about what is available to us, what opportunities we still have to be a part of the ultimate decision. If we find that the stadium is going to be there, then I think it's very important that the city bring its expertise into the conversation and that we work collaboratively with the university in working toward resolving the issues that will come about to infrastructure and traffic and so on.
Eric?
Marna, could I ask you, please, to repeat the question?
Polls consistently show that the majority of citizens don't want the stadium that's breaking ground this summer. If elected, how will you help bring the situation from disharmony into better harmony?
Great, thank you. To help bring harmony, there's a great book I recommend. I meant to bring it in with me. It's called Verbal Judo. The author describes verbal judo as "the gentle art of persuasion," of getting voluntary compliance. We can't make CSU do anything. We need voluntary compliance. And there's two elements in verbal judo. One is empathy, seeing a problem, seeing a situation from the other's point of view. Don't have to agree, but just seeing it from the other's point of view can be tremendously helpful. And the other thing is the whole idea of representation. This is true of all of us. We all represent somebody or something or some group that we're in. It's especially true on council. And the key to representation is to not take things personally. And we're going to have some disagreements, and I think we need to get outside of ourselves and realize, it's not about us personally, but it's about us representing our community. Thank you.
Thanks. Kristen?
Sure. Well, I work at CSU, and so I, but I wasn't for the stadium. It puts CSU in a lot of debt, and I don't think that that's a good thing for CSU, let alone for the community. And I don't think that the community should have to bear the cost of putting a stadium up. That being said, the intergovernmental agreement seems like it has some really strong parts to it that I like. One of them is the Good Neighbor Fund, so I think it's really good that we are helping the neighborhoods around, the Shealy neighborhoods and other neighborhoods around the stadium, and making sure that the neighbors there won't have to deal with as much with traffic and waste and different things like that. But I am looking forward to the open house, which is happening, I believe, on March 11th, and that will be a good opportunity for the community to weigh in on it. And I think if people are against the intergovernmental agreement, especially people in those neighborhoods, I hope they speak out. And then I hope that city council can go back to the drawing board and create a document that is more agreeable to the people in the neighborhoods around the stadium.
Thanks. Carl, new question. What are three ways that the city can increase housing affordability for all wage earners, including individuals experiencing homelessness to first- and second-time homebuyers?
This is now $64,000 question. That is the toughest issue, I think, that is facing the city. Other cities are facing exactly the same problem, and it's certainly not an easy one to solve. Some cities are, in fact, doing a little bit better. In Salt Lake City, they've reduced homelessness by 70%. They're making little mini communities of various kinds. Affordable housing, however, is related to the issue of homelessness in that about half of our homeless are there because they can't afford rent. The city can do some things, actually, to make it possible for people to afford the rent. If we have a great infrastructure that'll allow you to get from place to place where you live to where you work without even having a car, that's a big benefit. We can have municipal broadband, it does away with the Comcast fee. There are things which the city, excuse me, things which the city needs to do to make sure that these kinds of opportunities to get to work and to use technology are available to everyone. That said, it's obvious that with Redtail Palms, we have a program that's successful.
Thanks, Carl. I need to stop you. I beg your pardon.
And we can imitate those. Thank you.
Ray?
Thank you. When we talk about affordable housing, again, I have to express that it's about affordability in Fort Collins, totally, because people who are on fixed incomes, whether you raise utility rates or fees within the city, it's costing them, and it becomes regressive towards them. So affordability and affordable housing, the cost of housing is amazingly going up, and we know that. I mean, the rent has gone up exponentially. The cost of a house has increased, or a townhome, let's just use townhome. Townhome from over a year ago has increased by 27%. No one gets a pay raise that high. But when you talk about trying to build an affordable house, now that we're developing more in the northeast part of Fort Collins, you have to talk about water. We're walking into Alco's Water District, and the cost for a share of water for the city is about $6,500, but if you go into the Alco District, it'll run you anywhere between $22,000 to $27,000. So automatically, the cost of a house jumps by $25,000. So you have to talk about that as well.
Thanks, Ray. Nancy?
We, the city does offer some supports for people who are on the edge, trying to buy a home and don't have quite the full resources for that. One example is the City Homebuyer Program that supports people that are first-time homebuyers and don't have all the resources necessary. But there's more to this picture than that. And one part of it is that, one thing that keeps houses from being affordable is if wages are too low to allow people to be able to invest in housing. So it can be a double solution there. Raise the wages, and then the houses become more affordable. Encouraging businesses to give that kind of consideration to the people who work for them might be one possibility. There may be others.
Thanks, Nancy. Eric?
In 2008, my wife and I had a chance to sell our home, and with two kids out of the house and one graduating that year, we decided it was time to sell the big house. And as we considered what we wanted to do, we decided to rent to test out downsizing a little bit. I sell houses for a living, and as you recall, that was when the market turned, and so I didn't sell so many houses anymore. And we got stuck renting because I couldn't find a lender who thought a 30% drop in income was a good thing. So I can tell you firsthand the challenges of the wage situation. And there are three things that affect affordability. One is house prices. They are, of course, going up. Second is interest rates, been great. And the third thing is wages. And wages have been stagnant the last 10 years, in fact, haven't even kept up with inflation. So we have all taken a big wage cut, really, is what's happened. So what council can do...
Thanks. Thanks for heating the stop sign. Kristen?
Well, I do serve on the city's CDBG board, and so we deal with affordable housing all the time. It's concerning to me because there never is enough money. There's always more need than there is money. And some of the things that I think we could do to help the situation would be to reduce the minimum allowable home size. So I think this would be good for the environment, and it would be good, so there's this tiny home kind of concept, and maybe people know about that, but I think that's something we need to explore. I also think we need to talk about a strategy for the city's land bank, because that's a tool that we can use to make sure that we have more affordable housing and places to build affordable housing. And finally, Bob Two does provide a new fund for affordable housing, $4 million, and I think that that's a great start. In the affordable housing world, that doesn't go very far, but anything that we can do to help will be good. Rents are $1,200 a month now, and, I mean, some of us who've lived here 20 years probably couldn't afford to rebuy our own homes if we came into the community.
Thanks. Jerry?
This is a national problem, not just in Fort Collins. And one of the things I looked at in Bob Two is came up with the idea of the Affordable Housing Fund. And the idea of that fund, the $4 million, is not to buy, not to build a project, but to help incentivize a project. So usually, one of the problems are fees. The fees, the city charges the fees, other water discharge. That fund would help do 10% to 15% of a project. So you can get, like, which we did do for the Redtail Palms Permanent Support of Housing. That's an example where you can deal with homeless and veterans who really need some help. The other one that, to me, you need to look on is supply. The real problem is, the rents are going up, vacancies are down. So one of the things you have to look at, which many people don't like, but it's a reality of life, denser housing has to be along transit corridors. Over the last four years, we have been working on that. There are some projects being built on that. Even though you may not like the Summit for some parts, one of the things that is, is a project that increases the supply. So you don't bring down the price unless supply goes up.
Ray, here's a question. So one of the ballot initiatives, Initiative One, is an extension of the Building on Basics Capital Projects Program. It would extend this tax to 2015. Where do you stand on this tax for capital projects?
I'm in favor of it. There's, there are parts that, you know, a person questions. You don't get everything you want. When you see there's about seven or eight items on there that they plan to use that spending for, there's obviously going to be some disagreement about what parts should be spent on what. And I think, overall, the package is a good package. I think it works well.
Nancy?
I, I don't think it's about, really, my thoughts of every separate item on that ballot initiative, but one part of that that I think is important is the process that was used to get to that list of projects. And from what I understand, there has been a good deal of input from the community, from different groups within the community. That's very important. If the input has given opportunity for people to have a say about what is there, then it seems to me that it would be a valid project plan for the city.
Eric?
I'm going to vote for Bob Two, and I urge you to do so likewise. The legacy of our capital improvement taxes includes the main library, the Lincoln Center, the purchase of Avery House, open space, Epic, the senior center, Mason Trail, and the gardens on Spring Creek, just to name a few. And after the voters approve this, in the next 10 years, we will add to that legacy, safe routes to everywhere. we will add to that legacy, Safe Routes to Everywhere, Pudo River enhancements, Nature in the City, and the Southeast Community Center. I believe that we have a long history of investing in our community, and I am confident that the voters will continue to do so on April 7th. Thank you.
Kristin?
Sure. One nice thing about Bob Two is there seems like there's something for everyone in Bob Two. I do like the infrastructure parts. I like the safe routes. I think that's a really great thing in Bob Two. And I definitely like the affordable housing piece. There do seem to be some things that feel more like bling and less like basics, and would...
Can you speak a little closer and a little louder?
Sure, sure. So there do seem to feel like there's some things that seem a little more like bling and less like basics. And so I want to make sure that, in the future, we look at infrastructure needs that we have, because while a lot of these projects are nice, they don't self-fund themselves forever, and so they have to be sustainable. And I don't want to ignore infrastructure needs that we have to build things that we might not need as much as we need roads or underpasses for ambulances to get from west side to east side, or different interchange. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you for stopping. Jerry?
Yes, I'm supportive of the Bob Tax, the capital improvements tax, which I worked on along with the other council members. I think the tax is very well-balanced for things...
Speak up and a little closer.
Okay. I think the tax is very well-balanced. It actually is different. If you look back at some of the older taxes, they were road taxes, basically. Lots of road improvements all over. This tax is about Safe Routes to Everywhere. Over $20-some million of the money will be used for that in different ways. The tax also includes Southeast Community Center, and there's nothing that the city has for recreational opportunities inside south of Prospect, or Harmony Road, for sure. So it's been a long need, and the citizens spoke loudly on that. So I think this tax is something, the city of Fort Collins has a long history since 1983, '85, of having citizen measures voted on by citizens, capital measures. That is not true of all of Colorado. We did this before Tabor. We did this before it was required, and the citizens have a long history of passing those taxes because they know we come back every time and ask them for their ideas.
Thanks, Jerry. May I ask all of you, when you're answering, to speak up and a little closer to the mic? Thanks. Carl?
Is that okay? Thanks. We can't turn our back on these things that are in Bob Two. I think we need to do those, but we're going to have a lot of work to do after Bob Two. As Kristin mentioned, we've got a lot of infrastructure that needs work. It's not in here. We're going to need some serious things like overpasses. We're going to need some serious work on cleaning up the environment in here and protecting our environment. So Bob Two isn't the end of it, but it's the start of it, and I would vote for it.
Thanks. Nancy, the city's Climate Action Plan, CAP, proposes to reduce greenhouse gases in four strategy areas: building, transportation, electricity generation and supply delivery, and solid waste. What elements of the plan do you like best and least?
Well, I think what I like best is that we have a plan, and that it is set out very clearly to help us to get to a very important goal. I think that it's a very sound plan. It's a multimodal plan with a lot of different elements to it, and I think that's exactly what we have to use to get where we want to be. It goes from putting less trash in the landfill, which is a very good goal, to using electric cars, which is kind of down the road a ways, but offers us very creative and multiple ways to solve the problem that we are creating.
Thanks. Eric?
My response to the grocery bag fee was, if we're going to get everybody upset, let's at least do something big. Well, let me tell you, the Climate Action Plan is big. It's huge. What I like best about it is it's going to force us to rethink everything it is about how we get energy from extraction to the use. What I like least about it is the price tag. It's estimated to cost $600 million between now and 2015, which, by the way, is not five years away. It's three years and 10 months away. The plan was described at Tuesday's council meeting as aspirational and a framework, and council heard from staff and citizens that there's some important role for city council. One is leadership, and the other is citizen engagement. And I really feel like I welcome this. I say in relation to the Climate Action Plan, bring it on.
Kristin?
Okay. What I like most about the Climate Action Plan is it protects our environment. It's something that we need to do in our community. It's a way we can lead. It's a way we can show the region how it can, that it can be done. That's what I like best. I do, what I probably like least is the price tag, because it seems like a great plan. It is going to be expensive, and we're all going to have to buy into it. And I think the city's started out introducing it in a very good way and trying to get people used to changing their behaviors, which is what it's going to take to change our climate, is really some behavioral changes, things that we're not necessarily used to doing, not taking our cars as much, not really being more responsible citizens. But this is something we can do. We can do this, Fort Collins. I'm very supportive of it. I'm very enthusiastic about it, and I know we can do it, and I think it's worth the price tag. So while I don't necessarily like the price tag, I think that this is something that's worth it because it protects our community.
Jerry?
What I like best, it's a plan that shows you how you can get there. It's not necessarily we'll do all the hows, but it's one of the various ways to get to those reduced goals which are needed. Clearly, the majority of experts agree, this is the direction we have to do. What I like least is we're the only ones doing it, or there aren't many other things doing it. So actually, if we just do it, it doesn't make a change. But if others do, so the big thing is being a leader in this and showing people how you can start making those changes in your lives. And council will have many, many votes to do on this. Platinum Power Authority is going to have to have a major sea change that has started for renewables and will continue. But these are some big decisions that are going to be made, and as mentioned, it's going to take great engagement, public engagement. So one of the things I've asked for is a detailed implementation plan for the first two to four years, so we all see what measures are going to be done, what engagement needs to be done. And when there's votes by council, they happen, and people can make their comments, and that's where we'll see whether we're really on this road or not.
Carl?
We're all in favor of the Climate Action Plan. I think you can see that. We'd like to see our environment protected, and we want to do everything we can to do that. Hopefully, we could do it a little sooner than 2050, but we'll do what we can. Unfortunately for us, however, our climate here is not really controlled by us. It's being controlled by 23,000 wells sunk just east of us, each well distributing 30% of everything it brings out of the ground into the air. The last three, four years, we now have a brown cloud over Fort Collins, and if they get enough water, maybe by way of a big reservoir somewhere up in the mountains, we could have 50,000, 80,000 wells. We could be the most fracked place in the entire United States. That air that we have around us is important. We have open space. We have trails. But if the air above them is toxic, then we don't want to be on open space and tails. We have trails. We have to work as hard as we can to make sure that that particular environmental problem stops.
Thanks. Thanks, Carl. Ray?
Thank you. I think it's a very aggressive plan, but it is a plan. And I've always believed in, excuse me, when you set goals, which I think this one is, it's a very lofty goal, but it has to meet the test of what I call SAM, specific, attainable, and measurable. And this one does it. Even though we're figuring out the cost, the cost, when you think about in three years, $600 million, our budget every year is about $500 million for the entire city. You're talking about one plan, how expensive it's going to be. So we have to move very cautiously with this. So I think having a good vision, which this is, is very visionary. It has a lot of prescriptive parts to it that I think are helpful, and we have to know what it is. And as we move along, I think we can get there. I don't think there's any problem with it. But we have to weigh how it affects, it's one of the prongs of the test, of talking about our environment that I believe in, balanced between our economy, environment, and our quality of life. I think it improves our quality of life. It certainly helps our environment. The economy is what we're going to have to measure, see how it impacts our economy. Is it going to cost more for people or not?
Thanks, Ray. Eric, you have two choices. Which option would best serve the future of Fort Collins? A, widen I-25 to the state highway 14, or B, establish commuter rail to Denver?
I would love, I would love to be able to get on a train and ride to a Rockies game. And about once a quarter, I find I have business to do in the Denver Tech Center, and the traffic is a nightmare. And I've got a friend that lives down in Parker, a former college roommate, and I usually plan to have breakfast with him at the original Pancake House on Bellevue. We meet at 7:00 AM so that I can try to avoid the traffic, and it's still hardly manageable. The challenge with all of these things related to transportation is that, number one, is we have to work with our neighbors. And they don't always see eye to eye with us about what our priorities are. And secondly, it is about setting priorities. So this is an area where we are going to have to work with our neighbors to give a little, take a little, fight for what's right for us, to move forward in terms of our transportation challenges.
Thanks. Kristin?
Well, I want to take the train, and my kids do, too. My son is actually in his, I have an older son who's in his 20s, and when he took the bus down to Denver to go do a comedy show, it took him about three hours and three different buses to get down there. So I know that we have the BusDang coming online, and that sounds fun, but not as, nearly as great as it would be to have train service. We would have to work regionally with our neighboring communities to make that happen, but I would really love to see that. I think it would be a wonderful thing to have, and it would, congestion will only get worse. We can't widen I-25 enough, probably, and so I think we need to look to better options that are going to help our environment more, and really that are future-thinking ideas. And I think the train is in that realm.
Thanks. Jerry?
I think it's really a temporal issue, that the I-25 issue is something before us now with needs, and it was illustrated during the floods, where people took two or three hours to get to Denver, and even that is because some of the bridges were too low, et cetera. The train one is a longer-term one, because we're not even close to that stage yet. And the money just for the right-of-way is, you're talking the word billions, just the right-of-way. So this is something that needs, I agree with it. I am a council member from Loveland, put together 287 highway corridor, but it dealt with all multimodal issues there, including the train. So we're already starting to work with Longmont and Loveland and Berthitt and Fort Collins to see how we can do those things. But it's a huge lift. It's one that's going to take the sort of work that's been done on other issues we've seen, not something that's, it's not a really, it's one of those Hopson choices you're giving. It's, that's not the choice. The choice is what do you do now, and what do you do 15, 20 years from now?
Carl?
The train from Albuquerque to Santa Fe is fantastic, taken it several times. It's going to take some work at the state level, not at the city level particularly, to get that kind of project done. My students, debate students, always liked to go on trips places, and about every third year, I would take them by train up to Chicago. And they began to see what mass transit really was. Most have been, never been on a train. But we would be on four different trains, getting around Chicago to the places where we wanted to debate. And by the time we came back, they were pretty good at it. Occasionally, it was a little tricky. One kid almost stepped on an electrified rail, but he didn't, and it worked out all right. By the time they get back, they are firm believers in this kind of transportation, and I am, too.
Ray?
Thank you. Thank you. I love the train. First, one of the first Christmas gifts I ever got is a train. So that, to me, is Homer-bound for me. When you go in Europe, you'll see riding the train, how well it works. It's, of course, the communities are designed a lot differently. But I think Jerry's right. It's a long-range plan, and it's going to cost multi-billion dollars to try to get that through. And you're talking about condemnation, eminent domain, all those things that are going to play into this. So it's very expensive, long-range. But there's nothing wrong with having that vision, trying to work towards that. The Road Runner that we just talked about, going from Albuquerque to Santa Fe, works beautifully. I've been on that as well. The widening of I-25, that's something that's temporarily, we're going to have to fix. And we're already, the state's already working on that, and you know about that. So that, the Berthitt Hill, it's something that, it's a necessity. So we're, right now, we're kind of stuck in trying to get that repaired. But at the same time, we should work on that vision, on that goal of rail. We've been talking about this for a long time. When I was first in office, that was, same conversation came up. How do we get the rail to go through our community?
Thanks. Nancy?
Well, I think, given the fact that the train is, would not only be fun, would also take a good deal of the traffic off of I-25, I think it's something that we can't just say, well, that's down the road. Right now, let's spend all our money on this. I think we have to look at balancing our resources and start making that investment in time and resources toward what we really want to have, what we know is really going to meet our needs and preserve our lives. I would like to suggest there might be one other thing besides the two choices we got, and that is municipal broadband, which might allow people not to even have to go to Denver, but to be able to stay here. So I would hope we would look forward and begin making that forward plan happen.
Thanks. We're getting close to conclusion time, so I'm going to ask a yes or no question. Kristin, do you support the street maintenance tax continuation that's on the ballot?
Yes. Do I get to say anything else? If we're truly yes or no?
If you want to say a few things, but...
It's important to have that tax, because if we wait too long, we'll have, the costs will be astronomical. So we really need to maintain the streets.
Jerry?
Yes, the street maintenance tax is a culmination of what the city did. You started off figuring out how to fix potholes quick. Then we changed the street standards to make them better. And the pavement management one is to make sure you deal with streets when they're up here, not when they're down there. So it makes a lot of sense. One of the best things that citizens have ever done.
Thanks. Carl?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Okay. Nancy?
I say yes as well. Road maintenance is much more cost-effective than repair.
Eric?
Yes, followed by ditto to everything said.
Okay. Now it's time to start concluding. So we're going to start with Carl and then answer from the audience from right to left. You have one minute for concluding remarks. Carl, please.
Affordable housing deserves one more word, the word students. If CSU likes IGAs, let's have an IGA for them to take their eight vacant dormitories, fix them up, and put 2,000 students there. That'll open up some houses in my neighborhood for young couples. Now, in conclusion, Fort Collins is a great home for me, fantastic home for my family. We have a home that's slightly different from the kind of thing that I grew up with. Not that a military childhood is a bad thing, but a home is a great thing, specifically when you have your granddaughters right here. That's a fantastic thing. For that, I want to thank everybody who's come before me, worked on the council, worked in this city, to create the city that we have today. We owe them a debt of gratitude, and I want to work here to make sure that that kind of quality of life remains in Fort Collins, so that all of my family and all the families that come, come for those reasons, that it's a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thanks. Jerry?
Yes, I've had the privilege to serve in city council for some 17 years, dealing with lots of the good things that have been happening, the capital improvements and other and the changes. And I hope to continue doing that. I just can promise I will work hard to do those things. I will continue the bimonthly meetings that I've been having. I will continue responding to all your emails, listening to your ideas, and try to incorporate them. I will continue reaching out to CSU and others in the community, as well as I've done in the region, trying to reach out and look, develop those relationships before there's a crisis or problem in front of you, so you could actually do something about it when it comes. Because it's hard to make friends when you need them. You really need to make friends before there's a crisis in front of you. So that's one of the reasons. I reach out to folks, try to build relationships, and then work on problems for the solutions, work on the solutions to the problems.
Thanks, Jerry. Kristin?
Hi. So I want to say thank you again to League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event, and thank you for everyone who attended and gave us such thought-provoking questions. Fort Collins is the best place to live and the best place to raise a family, but it's clear we also have some issues that we need to work on. And I want to bring common sense answers to some of those questions that we have. I've served on a lot of leaders, I've served in a lot of leadership positions. I've worked on city and county boards and our school district and at CSU. I know how to listen and bring... I know how to listen and bring people together. I want Fort Collins to be the best place to live, the best place to work, the best place to raise a family. And let's make our best city even better. My name is Kristen Stevens. I'm running for city council for District Four, and please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
The part of campaigning that I have enjoyed the most is engaging with citizens. So far, I have knocked on 336 doors, and I'm coming to yours next. And I'm really looking forward to it. Unfortunately, a forum like this, there's no give and take. And I want to hear from you. So please do call me or send an email. My contact info's on my website, votforericronwall.com. My name is Eric Cronwall. I'm running as a candidate in District Four. I'm running to maintain our balance, quality community, robust economy, healthy economy, healthy environment. I'm optimistic about our future. We're going places. Let's join together to make that happen. I ask for your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Nancy?
I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters and all of you who came and sat through all of these profound statements. My history in Fort Collins has led me to highly value the lifestyle and the culture of Fort Collins. And it motivates me to want to become involved in serving our current residents. Our city is growing and changing, and it's important that the planning and decision-making that is taking place incorporates broad-based community input, and the outcome is met with community satisfaction. I hope that you will support me in my run for, to represent District Two. And I appreciate, again, that you were here and cared enough to come and hear what was going on.
Thanks, Nancy. Ray?
Thank you very much, everybody, for coming. This is a good showing, and I appreciate it very much. I like the radio show on NPR. It's called All Things Considered. And when you think about that, that's exactly what this council should do, is consider all things, everything that everyone has input about, and try to draw a matrix of what seems to be solvable, what works for us having a good dialogue in our community. You know, debate always looks for differences. Dialogue looks for solutions. That's the mode I want us to be in. When I grew up in the orphanage, I mentioned to you, the things I learned is to accept people for who they are, share what you have, and don't stereotype people. And we're going to get along great. I really believe that. I have an ear to hear the heart of the people, and I know people want a sense of community. I've demonstrated that in the past as your past mayor, and I want to continue to do that. I started those neighborhood meetings years ago, and they continue on today. And I'm glad to see some council members are still doing them. And I'll continue that. And I plan to meet with all the neighborhood associations in our district to try to fundamentally help what their needs are.
Thanks, Ray. So the League sincerely thanks all of you, council candidates for District Two, Four, and Six. And I need to make sure that you all know that the Voter Services team of the League of Women Voters of Laramore County is the organization that put this forum on. And our deep thanks, we also like to thank the City of Fort Collins, which is filming this program for rebroadcast multiple times before the election. We're now going to take a five-minute break and then resume with the mayoral candidate forum. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Welcome back to the second part of the Candidates Forum. I'm Karen Wagner, the moderator for this mayoral segment. There are three candidates seeking the office of mayor. The mayor serves a two-year term. And so we are going to ask the candidates to take up to a minute and a half to introduce themselves and explain what inspired them to run for the office of mayor. And we're going to reverse the order this time and start with Mr. Troxell. And it's going to be so hard for me to not confuse Wade and Ward, Ward and Wade. I'm going to call you Mr. Troxell.
That works.
You can still be Mike, if you like.
That works. Thank you very much, Karen, and thank you all for coming out tonight. Good to see a lot of friends out tonight. I'm Wade Troxell. I'm running for mayor of the City of Fort Collins. I grew up in Fort Collins, and when I was in junior high, I'd ride my bike to City Hall when it was the building next door here. And my dad was on city council, and I would attend the city council meetings. And I gained an appreciation and love for Fort Collins that's only grown. When I grew up, it was 30,000 people. Now it's 155,000 people, and it's a great place to live. And one of the things that I'm committed to is to continue that. I'm running to provide the leadership for Fort Collins to be a vibrant, be a vibrant community for all of its citizens, looking to a sustainable future. Thank you.
Good evening, and buenos tardes, Fort Collins. My name is Mike Prusnik, candidate for mayor, possibly even some more Spanish classes. I'm going to start by talking about what I bring to the table and why I'm running for mayor at the end. Two of my, I've been affecting positive change in the community for a number of years now through various projects that I've been involved with. Two of the most visible ones that you might be familiar with are getting GPS tracking onto the West Nile trucks and getting the city to film the stadium CDAC meetings. I supported things like the anti-fracking petition, so that we could get more data and find out what was going on, even though we didn't do so well in the lawsuit. The Greeley earthquakes really show that we were right to be suspicious of the dangers of fracking. The government tried to tell us that the asphalt plant was safe. We filed a petition on that one, and while we didn't get the signatures, we did discover that they were in violation of their permit, and now the government's on our side, trying to make that right. When second reading of the bag fee turned it from a good environmental protection ordinance into a Wall Street welfare program, I successfully led the group that helped stop that detriment. During that time, I was also proposing a low-cost, high-impact alternative to actually reduce more plastic. Unfortunately, the city wasn't ready to adopt that. Hopefully, with the zero-waste part of the new climate action plan, we'll see that coming back. When my supporters showed me polling data that aligned, that showed that my vision for the future lined more with the community than any of the declared candidates, that's when I decided to accept their nomination. Thank you, Mike Prusnik for mayor.
My name is Ward. Push the button. Am I on now? My name is Ward Luthy. I'm running for mayor of Fort Collins. Thank you, Karen and the League, for sponsoring this forum. It's always a great opportunity to express views. Thank you, everybody, for coming. A little bit of background first. I do have degrees in Recreation and Park Administration. Particularly for this job, I have a master's in city planning. In terms of the city, I've worked on the Natural Resources Board for the city. I started a group, or helped start a group in 1989 called Citizen Planners, where we looked ahead at the environmental and development issues in the city. As an aside, I do play softball with the Special Olympics program here. I was also on the original Open Space Program, and I worked on the anti-fracking program. After I got my master's degree, I did a little bit of time in Illinois, working to preserve prime agricultural land. And after realizing I didn't do well in a three-piece suit, I came back to Wyoming, trained with the National Outdoor Leadership School, went to work with Outward Bound for five years with troubled youth. After being a guide for a number of years, I came to CSU to get my doctor in outdoors, got invited to work on the President's Commission on Americans Outdoors. I think one of the most important things we need as we face growth is strong leadership. I am not in favor of allowing one person, a university, to build a stadium and take away the character of Fort Collins. So as we face growth, I will stand strong and make sure that we lead in every sustainable and quality of life that we can.
Thank you. We're going to continue in the same order for the questions, where the candidates will have one minute on these questions. And we always like to start with a softball question that isn't challenging. And so, Mike, if you'd start, we would like to know how the city can improve the train situation in Fort Collins.
That's not an easy question.
No.
Yeah, I don't know how much control we have over the train here in Fort Collins. Everything I've been to, and all the meetings I've been to, they talk about how the train, people don't want to negotiate with us, they're slow, they have a right-of-way, the courts have ruled with them, the Congress has ruled with them, and we don't have a lot of choices there. So I think the real thing that it's going to take to get that is population, votes by the power of the people, to write your congressman, to get the senators involved, get the municipal league involved, and get other cities that are having this same problem, and get the law changed, so that there's a better way in which we can negotiate on a more fair terms with the railroad as we grow. Because in many ways, the railroad is a dinosaur, and it's holding us back, it's preventing some of our growth. And I think really, for the future of the nation, we do need to have better terms with railroads than the one-way street we have right now. Thank you.
Actually, I like the railroads, but with the traffic and the noise, I think we have to do something. While they're an entity of their own, this is Fort Collins, there are 155,000 of us, and I think it's our responsibility as mayor or on the council to stand up and make sure we get as much as we can. If possible, what we do, we'll have to go around it, if we have to build below grade or not above grade. But I would probably do underpasses. In Illinois, those worked extremely effective, and I think we could do that here.
Okay. If I could add a part two to that question. What are your concerns about the types of someone's, excuse me?
I still need to...
Oh, wait, excuse me.
Okay.
You're not ready for part two?
I'll take the softball question, then you can have...
Okay, go ahead.
Railroads are always been a challenge for Fort Collins, dividing our community in half and those sorts of things. But over the last 10 or so years, the noise issue with the Federal Railroad Administration increasing the horn decibel level, which has only made more of a challenge along our transportation corridor in Mason Avenue. And so, next week, actually, meeting with the Federal Railroad Administration. And this council has been very proactive in working with our senators and our Congress folks, and working with the Federal Railroad Administration. And we're taking some recommendations to them that will address Fort Collins' needs and not just a general one-size-fits-all that the Railroad Administration currently does. I'm confident that, in hopefully my lifetime, that there will be some changes.
Thank you. Now, part two. Concerning the trains, would you, as mayor, work with the surrounding communities of Loveland, Berthitt, Longmont, and so forth, concerning the types of materials that roll through the 287 corridor, and in this case, the heart of Fort Collins? Ward, would you start the question?
Absolutely. In almost everything we do as a community, we need to be, we can have the strongest policies here, but we always have to work with the people around us. I think that's a growing concern, the type of materials that are going through here. I think we should be aware of everything and the toxicity level, and how we're going to deal with anything that might happen. We have to know that in advance. One of the things about, one of the big problems with a railroad like it is, is trying to get emergency vehicles across these long-running trains. So we need to deal with that almost immediately. We need to protect, you know, the life and health of those people who live here, whether that's getting through the rail with the emergency vehicles, or maintaining a strong awareness of what's going through the community.
I'm fully supportive of working with our neighbor communities on this particular issue. As a council, right now, we're beginning to do that. I chair the Legislative Review Committee, and we do have some discussions going on with our congressional folks to actually make the railroad loads available, and utilizing technology such that it is transparent. And I think that's fundamentally necessary to know what's traveling through our community. I think we also need to take precautions for anything that's hazardous, and have, which we do, an extra hazardous team in case of an accident. But I would rather preclude accidents in the first place.
Yes, working with our neighboring communities is always good, but in the aspect of trains, we can't really control what's being shipped to who. We can't control business development in other neighborhoods. But knowing what is on those trains is very important, and that's where we need to work with the other entities. We need to know what's on the trains. One of the things we have in America is an emergency response period on the trains that doesn't require that every city have the right emergency response in place. It just has to be somewhat available. And we need to look at models like they use in Canada, where there's a higher requirement for the emergency responders to be closer, and try to adopt some of those models, work with our neighbors to make those happen, and look for places where we can alleviate that on our own. There's a number of places in town where the railroad's above grade, and it's a little bit easier to put some emergency access through there. And we can look at that, we can work together and find some solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, how would you handle the homeless situation in Fort Collins, balancing the rights of business owners and the rights of the homeless? Ward, would you start that round?
Sure, absolutely. Two great examples come to mind. Salt Lake City, I think was mentioned before in the council. Over the last 10 years, they have statistically reduced their homeless population to zero. That doesn't mean it's zero, but it's statistically there, by providing very affordable, even though it's small, units with onsite employment in drug and alcohol counseling. They've been very effective, and I think we could easily do that here. We've done some good things. The other example which comes to mind, which I think we could use very effectively, is Aspen. They have a very strong problem with trying to house people. What they have done is put in a real estate transaction tax. They take that fund, they buy property, and then they work with developers to produce or to build low-income housing or affordable housing. It's been extremely successful, and I think there are a lot of ways we could do that here in our community to basically alleviate the problem.
I would say addressing homelessness is a wickedly complex kind of a problem. And I think it's, first of all, as a community, better understanding the problem that we have. Fully supportive of the Homeward 2020 efforts to coordinate much of the activity within our community, so it's not duplicated, but the support services are provided throughout our community. We have a very giving community, and with the Facebase community, and a lot of our nonprofits and so forth. And I think our permanent supportive housing through Redtail Ponds is a great first step in providing some key housing options for our homeless, as well as our veterans down on the luck. You know, I also believe that there's, we need to differentiate between the transient population and our homeless population. I think as a community, we focus on our homeless population and all of those factors related to that. And I think affordable housing and supply was mentioned earlier as well. So there's a lot of elements to that. But definitely, there's a lot of things that we can do to address homelessness and panhandling.
Yeah, the homeless issue is going to be very complicated. There's a number of facets going on there. Jefferson Park, I heard, was going to close on January 1st. It didn't. I haven't been following the exact update on that. But if that does close, that's going to make the situation a little bit worse before it gets better. There's Salt Lake City, everyone's talking about Salt Lake City, and that's a good model there. A lot of the things that also come up, though, is we need to really think about where we are at a community. Because a lot of the discussion that happened last summer was just very negative. And it took a couple council members bringing in, separating homelessness from the criminal aspect, and we need to focus on that. We need to have some lessons learned from what happened last year, because it didn't go well. And we really need to learn from that, move forward in a way that honors human rights, and make sure that we do that well and efficiently. And at a certain point in time, businesses are here to serve the people, and everybody has a right to be in public and make their comments, and we need to find a way to share better than we did last year. Thank you.
Okay. Should the city revisit the plastic bag issue? Ward? Wade?
So, this will be Wade. I'll let Ward answer for herself. So the plastic bag issue, I think it was ill-conceived as a way it was brought forward, and I think the citizens rightly so brought forward an initiative. And I was one of the dissenting votes initially, and was glad to support it, that ordinance being overturned. From my perspective, I think we need to take a more holistic systems perspective with regards to our waste streams. We still don't know the waste streams within our community. I think we need to look at recycling, but reuse. But also, I think, waste as a resource and not just something to do away with. And that's one thing I think we really haven't done with regards to, focus tends to be on landfill, as opposed to waste as a resource. So I'm more of a fan of waste energy and looking for options... So, I'm a more of a fan of waste energy and looking for options there that can be a positive benefit to our community instead of a punitive one.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think we should reinstate or relook at the bag fee just in terms of a bag fee. The real environmental threat is the chemical in there, polyethylene, and we really need to be looking at a total polyethylene process. One of the reasons the bag fee failed, it was easy to go around and show data from other cities that if we remove plastic bags from the grocery, it just creates more plastic trash bags, more plastic bin liners. And there's a lot of data going around like that. And so, focusing just on plastic bags is not the right solution. One of the things as the group trying to stop the plastic bag fees, we brought to the table were proposed ordinance to actually reduce waste and actually reduce plastic by reducing waste. And I think we really need to be looking at that aspect as opposed to just focusing on one, one subject, look at that bigger picture and say, how do we make an overall better solution as opposed to just taking something that's visible and in our face, making that go away and actually creating a bigger problem that's kind of hidden from us. Thank you.
I take a little bit different view on this. Plastic bags have some problems with the chemicals, but the real problem I think is that we have to realize that we are one species. We're, you know, billions of us on the planet and we produce billions of plastic bags and there's a direct cost to a lot of other species that we actually kill. We also have a massive area in the Pacific Ocean filled with plastic. I think I would not do the ordinance as a tax, I would ban plastic bags. Europe does not have plastic bags or allow them in stores. They do absolutely quite fine. I think we can do well. Maintaining a quality of life for ourselves does not mean that we can push off and ruin the quality of life for other people or other species on this planet.
This question, we'll start with Mike. And it is, is it critical that city council into, enter into and sign an on-campus stadium IGA or intergovernmental agreement with CSU at the March 17th city council meeting? Please explain your answer.
I don't think it's critical to do it at the March 17th council meeting. I read the draft IGA online and there's a lot of vagueness in it. There's very few specifics except maybe the community fund, the $37,000. There's a lot of things that talk about excessive noise, but excessive's not defined. We could end up spending more time in court arguing over what excessive means if we sign this. When I look at the IGA, which is intergovernmental agreement, it really looks to me more like an MOU or memorandum of understanding level. I don't think we're at the level where we can put the specifics in to sign a contract that will be legally binding. I think we need to be signing an MOU shortly and then following it up with a contract later this year when we have those specifics nailed down. Thank you.
I think it's a good thing that we have an IGA. It's not enforceable. I would stop the stadium. I think we should act very aggressively to stop it. I think it's legally enforceable. If you look at the 1956, 1957 agreement, there's wording in there that states that it has to be in the best overall interest of the university. In the annexation agreement, there also is wording that says that any project like that cannot change the character of Fort Collins. If you look, for me, an icon of Fort Collins is Horse Tooth Rock. Putting a 12-story stadium, football stadium, in the middle of our community is not what I want to be recognized in Fort Collins. Students, staff, staff, staff and faculty and residents are against it. One person is for it. I think council abdicated their leadership role on not standing up and actually if we have to take legal actions, going for it. If I were mayor, I would stand up and go to stop it.
Well, I've been the leader on council in terms of speaking out and talking to Tony Frank twice a year when he comes to city council for the last three years with regards to the stadium. As a practical matter, CSU is a separate legal jurisdiction of the state than it is the city and I think we can shake our fist at the air and say, Kershy Red Baron, but I think it's incumbent upon us to be responsible. And the IGA does represent a, a commitment at a level that the university is making that provides infrastructure they never have to our community for the benefit of our community. So, I do support the IGA. I've been working towards this end for the last year and a half and I think this is a first step in getting those commitments. Then it becomes an important part to hold CSU accountable for the, for what they've said they would do within the IGA and I intend to do that.
This is a long question. I'm going to try to paraphrase it. Apparently, the city has the ability through an election to allow voters to direct the city of Fort Collins, in this case, to establish a city broadband network. And would you be in favor of working on such an initiative and letting the voters decide that? Ward, Wade, excuse me.
Okay. So, so the...
Wait, I think I got you out of order. I obviously got you out of...
Mr. Luthy.
Mr. Luthy, please.
My name is Ward Luthy and I'm running for mayor of Fort Collins. I think do, I would, I'm very much in favor of doing broadband for our community. If you look at some of the examples across the country, particularly in Tennessee, there were some large cities that were very down economically. They went to a very high-speed broadband and their economy is flourishing. If you look at, we have a university, we have people from all over the world, they're top-notch in their field. They have all of us who may not be top-notch, but we, you know, social media is getting stronger and stronger as is the internet, so I would work very aggressively. I think it'd be good for our business community and I think it would be good for our residents.
Well, I've been an advocate for broadband in our community and I worked cooperatively with Ben Manville when he was on council, looking at the gig U option and proud to say that our current budget that has $300,000 in it and I like the way our city is pursuing this in terms of we're going to plan for the requirements that we want for our city. With regards to the Pacific State legislation that precludes that, we're working with our state legislators on that, but I think more importantly, at the federal level, the FCC just last week has actually some, done some rulemaking that fundamentally changes that. So, we need to keep an eye on it, but the bottom line is this is an important aspect of our Fort Collins having broadband. I think it's, you know, having the appropriate pipes, if you will, and whether it's a utility, an information utility for our city or how we do it, that's where the planning is important.
As a computer guy who uses a lot of networking, yeah, I definitely like a lot of broadband. The issues that I think about at this subject become complicated because we, we have a company who's, has the broadband technology and the question is at what point in time do we decide that we're going to take that and do the broadband ourselves? I look at what's going on with Boulder and taking the, the municipal energy away from Comcast, or I'm sorry Comcast, away from Excel. And they can point to some very good reasons for them to take it over as a municipal utility in the fact that Comcast is not meeting their utility needs. So, I'd like to see a, a good justification that we need to do this as a utility because the businesses that are out there are not using it well. And at that point, I'd be very supportive of doing it. I'd be very supporting it, of putting it on the ballot and if it goes, then I'd be very supportive being behind it.
Thank you. The next question involves the Pooter and the question reads, what, what is the importance of the Pooter River and how can it best be protected as development encroaches? Mr. Troxel.
Yes, well, the Casual Pooter River is, is clearly a gem of our community and I think we've done some good things over the last couple of years with the, the river restoration plan and, and what that provides. There's only one or two parcels that are, are either not natural area or, or to be developed and it's in the hard corridor portion of our, of our community. So, I think we've done an excellent job of protecting the, the Pooter, you know, in and, and through and, and, and out of our community. I think there are some things we could still do with respect to the Pooter and I, I think, you know, improving some in-stream flows and, but I think restoring the, the natural habitat and, and the ability to, our floodplain regulations and those sorts of things have been a good thing that will provide enhancements to our Pooter River. And I think oftentimes when we focus on the Pooter, we, we ignore our other watersheds, including Fossil Creek and Spring Creek and Box Silver, and so we should include those as well in our discussion.
Yeah, the, the Pooter is very vital to our city, to our economy and to our children's future. There are issues, there's a report that came out recently talking about how dire shape the Pooter is in. One of the things I like to look at is in the Pacific Northwest, they've been removing some dams and stream health has been coming back. And how do we get more flow into the river when they want to build NISP and NISP is going to take stream flow out at some times, it will put some more in at other times. But I like to look at the concept of the gray water technology that lets you reuse your wash water over and over again so that rather than using one gallon of water and throw it away, you could use it 10, 20, 50 times depending on how efficient you are. And what that allows us to do is dramatically reduce the amount of water we take out of the river, which means more water can flow through the river. And then at the downstream end where we're putting dirty water into the river, now there's more clean water mixing with the dirty water. It helps keep a cleaner environment. And the whole concept of being able to take water out for a beneficial use to humans, we're kind of forgetting that we, that a beneficial use, we need to keep some water in there for the health of the river of itself. Thank you.
You know, I was trying to remember what my name was. Could you repeat that question just briefly?
Should we trade places?
We could trade places, yeah, that'd be good. Could you, actually, could you just...
Repeat the question. Okay, I thought you wanted me to...
Oh, no, 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 no.
The question is, what is, what is the importance of the Pooter River and how can it be protected as development encroaches?
It's vitally important. If you look at how many cities or states in the United States have a wild and scenic river that go through them, it's very few. This is a jewel that adds to our quality of life almost beyond measure. I mean, it's almost impossible to quantify this. To build a NISP or a reservoir on it, I think would degrade that river more than it is. I think we need to find many other solutions for bringing water to our community, which I think is possible. I was, that's 30 seconds, that goes really quickly. It's, it's vital to our high quality of life. There is water out there that can still be purchased by the city that would actually bring some more of the water without taking away from the Pooter and I'd highly support that.
Thank you. Since this topic just came up, the question to Mike is, should the city of Fort Collins actively support or actively oppose the Northern Integrated Supply Project or NISP? Please explain why or why not.
I think we should actively oppose the project at this point in time. The project in itself, if you read the, at least the EIS that came out originally a few years back, the amount of energy that they're going to need is about 5% of the residential electric that the city of Fort Collins is currently using just to pump water around the system. We're being told right now as citizens that we need to reduce our electric rates and we're paying more, more, more for electricity and getting less for that value. And at the same time, NISP is going to be using a bunch of it. It's not a flood control reservoir. All the water has to be pumped into it, so it's not going to help with any flooding issues at all. And if you divide the cost of it over the number of users that are planning to it, I think the money would be much better spent using that to create gray water systems, rain barrel systems, water storage systems and kind of a water microgrid. Unfortunately, a lot of that is currently illegal right now and I think we should pursue that aspect as opposed to just blindly taking NISP and building the dinosaurs, which reservoirs are, given the advancements of technologies that we've had. Thank you.
My name is Ward Luthy. I'm running for mayor of Fort Collins. I don't think we should build NISP. You know, it reminds me of a story of, of the Giving Tree, that we have these incredible resources and we tend to start looking at them as simply commodities like, well, we're going to take a little bit here, we got more people, we have to take it from the river, we have to have less air quality. I don't believe any of that's true. We're incredibly smart people, we have a lot of creative ideas, we have top people from every discipline in this, not only in the city but around the world. We can find a way to maintain our quality of life without continuing to degrade those resources that make this quality of life one of the best in the world. It's a livable city and people want to move here simply because of everything that we have that is so magnificent. And I would do everything possible to find alternative ways. I do not support NISP.
Okay, we're getting very close to...
I still need...
Excuse me.
That's all right.
That's Wade.
So, you know, with regards to our water future, I think, you know, we have an aging Halligan reservoir dam that I think we need to replace that dam and increase that reservoir to its full potential and that does address Fort Collins' water future. We are not a participant in the NISP project, so whether or not we actively support or actively work against it, it's not the project of the city of Fort Collins. The only thing I point out with regards to the NISP is there's 8,000 water users in South Fort Collins that are supplied by Fort Collins Loveland Water District that is part of NISP. And, and so, we, we, you know, as well as other communities or other water districts, two other water districts. And so, I think it's in our best interest to combine the water districts such that we can better conserve and, and, and better utilization of capital for our water future than when we tried to control growth in the, in the eighties by restricting water taps that drove these other water districts to be formed.
Thank you. We are going to do just, just one, one-word answers for just two questions and then we'll be ready for your conclusions. So, Mike, were you among the 56% of Fort Collins voters who passed the 2013 fracking moratorium? Yes or no?
Yes.
Mr. Luthy?
Yes, I was, I worked on it actually.
Actually, I, I wasn't because that isn't a, basically one operator that's been operating in Fort Collins or north of Fort Collins since 1924 and we're not under pressure for oil and gas development. And so, I, I basically was looking at for Fort Collins' best interests and I voted, I voted against that.
This is not yes, no, but it's, it's a one-word answer. Or hopefully it'll be one-word answers. Mr. Luthy?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the most critical environmental issue facing the community? One issue.
Growth.
Mr. Troxel?
I would say clean energy.
Mike?
Ground level ozone.
Okay, that was good. Thank you.
Two words, I guess.
So, the candidates now have, please hold your applause till the end and we do have some of the remarks. It's not just a comedy show up here, but... So, you each have one minute for a conclusion and we, we will reverse the order for the conclusions and so, Mr. Luthy will start the conclusions. That's right.
For my full-time job, actually, I run a hiking company called Walking the World. We do trips, walking trips around the world, including the Camino de Santiago in Spain, but I have looked at more than 30 different areas in the world. Fort Collins is definitely the best place to live in the world in the United States. We have to work hard to maintain this quality of life. We're going to need strong leadership to do that. I appreciate that we need to collaborate and we need to kind of get everybody's opinion, which I will, but we have to set a very strong course in order for us to withstand the growth pressures that are facing us today. I think one of the worst things we could do is to allow the stadium to be built simply because it says we are going to abdicate any control over our character or our future growth. I think we need to stand up and say, absolutely not. We're going to maintain our high quality of life and we have the right to do so. Thank you very much. I also would ask for your vote and your support as mayor of Fort Collins. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the most important things for the government to do and our primary job is really to protect and promote the general welfare of the community, to protect and promote your quality of life. And in that regard, the stadium is going to be a big detriment. Not even, our current council is advocating for it being a big positive. They're talking about... They're talking about reducing the risk. And it is possible to stop this stadium. I strongly support stopping the stadium. And it's a financial decision that Tony Frank made and the university made, and because it's a financial decision, we have plenty of tools in our toolbox that we can use that stadium to stop it. And I really support, if I'm elected mayor, to bring those tools to discussion at the April 28th work session and start to vote them in at May 2nd on the ones that you approve using. And we can actually stop this stadium. And then for my final concluding comments, you know, for me, I'm kind of a downside risk management guy. I like to protect, you know, the bad things from happening. I like to have high-level strategies, and then I like to have people go ahead and move forward and let the upside potential take care of itself. And I'm getting the stop signal, so I'll simply say thank you, and please vote Mike Prus for mayor.
I want to thank the league and Karen tonight for moderating this discussion, and I want to thank everybody that came out tonight. I'm running for mayor to provide leadership for a vibrant Fort Collins, looking to a sustainable future for all of its citizens. This is not a one-issue town. There's a lot of things that go on in our community that make it a wonderful place, and that's where you need, I bring practical, common sense kind of leadership to the council, and I will be doing that. I think creating adversaries and trying to battle things is not where our city should be going. I think we should be looking for bigger solutions and working together. Whether taking one issue and driving that home to make some kind of point, I don't, I don't see as productive. I think we need to look for the long term, provide for solutions that I saw growing up here by leaders and mayors that came before me, and look to the future that can continue Fort Collins to be a great place to live, work, play, work, recreate, and to just to raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. During tonight's forum, Channel 14 has displayed several links on the screen. One of those links is to the city clerk's office, where you can obtain information on voting. The number, since you're not seeing the link tonight, is 221-6515. The second website is vot411.org. This is a league website where voters can read and compare the candidates' views on a variety of issues, local issues. On that website, the ballot issues are also posted, along with pros and cons on each of those issues. Information about the history and work of our local league, which is not for women only, can be found at the League of Women Voters of La Rama County website. The city of Fort Collins works with the league in producing the league's monthly cross-currents program. Last week's program featured a panel discussion on building on basics, the ballot issue. That program can still be viewed on Channel 14 as well as the city and league websites. Thanks to the candidates for your participation. We couldn't have done it without you. And thanks also to tonight's audience in the council chambers and at home for your interest in local government. Unfortunately, there is never enough time to ask all the questions submitted. A special thanks to the city of Fort Collins for working with our voter service team to make tonight's forum possible. Information on the candidates and on the league membership are available in the lobby as you leave. Thankfully, democracy is not a spectator sport in the city of Fort Collins. Please encourage your friends and family to vote on April 7th. Thank you. Good night.